Sing none, roll call please.
Nelson?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Walden?
Yes.
Workman?
Yes.
Alrighty, up next we have a motion to approve the payment of the bills as they appear on the warrant sheets. Motion to approve that? You have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, any discussion? Sing none, roll call please.
Workman?
Yes.
Walden?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Reed? Nelson?
Yes.
Alrighty, up next we have public comments on agenda items. Do you have any to talk about? Grace, go ahead.
Can I talk on the fence for the pool?
You, you can, yes, since that is on the agenda, yes.
Can I do that?
Uh huh.
Um, I just wanted to come tonight to share um my perspective as a mother raising an autistic child. Um currently um my son is five and we deal with eloping and that is a term where um autistic children have a fight or flight response and they run. Um and they run until you can catch them. Fifty percent of all autistic kids will run at some point and drowning is the number one cause of death when autistic kids elope. Uh we have two locks on all of the doors in our house. We have a tracking device on him that notifies us if he leaves our property. Um however, he has skilled fences, he does run. This is, this is something that we deal with every single day throughout the night. Um it is something that is on our minds at all times and knowing that drowning is the number one cause of death. Um for our son, when he does elope, is absolutely terrifying. I feel like we are doing everything that we possibly can to make sure we know where he is and to keep him safe. Uh but I would love to know that there are fences up protecting him from wandering into a yard or if he does take off, that at least can slow him down so that we can catch him. Um we are people that I feel like love this town and utilize this town. We go on bike rides every single day. Um I have a shop on Main Street, we visit our local library weekly. Uh the thing that is so scary about this is he will elope and take off at any moment. A loud truck drives by and rugs his engine, here in assumption, right? Um he will take off. We have been on bike rides and a dog has started barking and he has dropped his bike and taken off running. Um we never know when, when this is going to happen. That is the fight or flight response when you're dealing with an autistic child. Um and again, I feel like we are doing everything we can to keep him safe and put the measures in place. But I would love to see a community um think about my son and kids like Pierce um that do have that innate fight or flight response to take off. And um I would just love to see a little more protection so that that doesn't have to be our story. I don't want this story to be, let's, let's not fix it until it's broken because it could be my son that breaks it. Um and I, I would um, I would regret not coming up here and sharing those statistics and what my family deals with every single day if um something like that could happen.
Anybody else?
I have a couple of questions, I'm just reading through the ordinance. Um if the, if there's a current pool that's built or put together that's within ten foot of the lock line, do they happen to move it?
They, they would, yeah.
Okay, so.
I'm gonna say with a fence around it.
Well, no, 'cause it says even with the fence, it cannot be.
Yeah, you can't have it within ten feet, but.
Okay, and then, oh sorry, is there a grace period of what it's gonna take to build one?
Yeah, well, uh the kind of the plan is, is a year for once, if this passes, it'll be a year, so we'll go July 5th of 2024.
And then, does this include temporary pools? So like, I have triplet, three-year-olds, okay, so like, I don't want a full-time pool, but I do have like those little two-ring ones, it's like this tall. On a hot day, I wanna pop it out in my yard for the girls to play in. Is that a problem if I don't have a fence? 'Cause I'm moving to a house that doesn't have a fence, so do I have to fence it in for those couple summer days?
I wouldn't.
'Cause it says less than four foot in the fence.
How deep is your pool?
Well, no, I'm, it doesn't matter, it just says less than four feet. It would be, it would be less than four feet.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, hold on, just, hold on. But yeah, so just if it's, if it's like, like I said, if you've got a little temporary blow-up thing, the way the ordinance is written,
Yeah.
you can't put one of those out temporarily for the afternoon, you know what I mean?
How? What's, what's your opinion on that? I mean, and what did Rochester do? Did they save the thing?
Uh, no, they actually, they discussed it and they just left it.
They didn't do it?
Yeah. Does this include?
Yeah.
Koi ponds or, you know?
Yeah.
Does it include like bounty houses? Like, we have a bounty house that has a waiting area in it, you get about half a foot of water in it. Like, where's, 'cause there's no, there's no like, it just says under four foot. So anything in your yard that holds water for swimming that's less than four foot, it says it has to have a fence.
I mean, this is the, the county's ordinance, basically, just drafted to be added to the city's uh ordinance. So however they deal with it, you know, uh in countywide, would I assume either way that the section would deal with it?
I don't have my book ready, but you have to, can't be ordered to say anything. Eighteen to twenty-four inches doesn't have to have a fence.
No, it doesn't.
Eighteen or less. In the Janet poster, says nothing about that.
All it says is less than four foot, yeah, 'cause like I said, yeah.
You got a lot of work to do on this ordinance because it doesn't cover any pool that's not in the ground.
Yeah, 'cause.
Zero and four foot. If you've got a green bin pool, that's, that's not four foot. You don't even deal with that in this ordinance.
Yeah, all it says for um under four foot is if it's an in-ground.
You're right.
But yeah, but like I said, I just, you know, 'cause like, like I said, just something temporary, like if you've got it up for less than twenty-four hours or whatever, like, I think there needs to be some better, or some different wording in there, 'cause it opens up a lot, you know?
I've seen their triplets playing and it looks perfect.
Well, and also, you know, there's also a line that says, "An above-the-ground pool, four foot or higher, need not have a fence, but they gate so long as the ladder is removed and not in use."
Correct, but this is like an eighteen, this is like an eighteen-inch-tall pool, so it's saying that I need to have a fence because it's less than four foot.
What we can do is that if this, if this passes, we can then go through and amend it later, kind of see how it goes. 'Cause like I said, we, if this passes, we'll give everybody a grace period and then we kind of will tweak it to where it includes, you know, like, it doesn't include those types of pools and, you know.
What's the cost gonna be to put it in now and amend it later versus wait till next month and fix it before you get it out?
Well, I mean, it's just a possibility business of the city.
I mean, we could, we could amend it now with it, but, I mean, I, nobody's speaking on it.
The problem is, uh, there, you know, you can research this and look at communities all over the state and find all sorts of different. From, from multi-page, this, you know, here's all the various regulations to, you know, this is one of the more simple, basic, just thrown out there.
But it needs a lot of openings.
Yeah, I, well, I think that's the, the idea here, so there's a lot to bite off here and, and I think the city wanted to try and get something.
It's, yeah, 'cause if I have a fence that's eighteen inches tall or a pool that's eighteen inches tall and I get a phone call that, hey, I get turned in, I get a fine now 'cause I don't have a fence up, but it's like, oh, this person said it was okay, now this person doesn't, it needs to be black and white.
No, we, and we will, if, if this passes, like, we're not gonna be writing out ordinance violations come, you know, tomorrow if this, if this passes, but we'll work with everybody.
We were also told in the last meeting that if you had a ladder for the floor, that if they had a gate or some way to keep access, that's not what this ordinance serves.
Yeah, so you just gotta take it out, yeah.
Yeah, you just had to, because what I did was, when I asked the aldermen, you know, I told them, I would survey them, everybody was happy with how this was written on it. So this is why they wanted to present, present it today, uh today. But like I said, we can always go through and amend it later. Something on the books now.
I, I agree with Felicia, I agree. How do you vote on something that's not right?
Yeah, and then go back and fix it later, you know, it's.
Well, I mean, I wish the aldermen, I mean, speak up then, I, I mean.
I'm not gonna, I don't, I mean, I don't think we should go through with it. If it's, it's got so many questions, plus, I mean, at this point, I'm not gonna motion on the table for to pass it, to start the ordinance. So, I mean, either way, we wanna go.
It could be a great ordinance if it, you know, you covered all the.
Hey, you table it next month?
I, I don't make this decision.
They say kill, you gotta table it and revise.
Yes, that's, I'm not. What do I do, Travis, you want?
I really don't wanna have somebody move it. I'd like to have a little more information as to see, like, what's in effect as far as. This ten feet is a whole way, I mean, they have a pretty decent-sized pool, they made, you know, they have whole-sized ten feet.
Is there anybody that needs to move that pool?
That's what I know.
I think, I think potentially, yes, yeah.
Anybody that needs to move that pool first, yeah.
I have a five thousand dollar pool that is going, it's permanent, it's not supposed to be moved. I don't know that it is ten feet, but I imagine it could be close.
There's, there's other pools in town that's within ten feet.
Oh, yeah.
And they, I know my neighbor has one and she was told since it was within the ten feet by the last mayor, it had to be.
Well, and Ted Sloan has, Ted Sloan has the one and it's like, you can't move that at all and it's within ten feet of all the locks back there in that corner.
I don't, I'm just, I'm not gonna put a motion up the table to pass the ordinance.
Hi, any more public body comments?
Um, one more, and this is on the annexation. Is that the, whenever you sent the mailers out, is that annexing in all the property that had in the Tiff district or is this strictly that twelve-point-whatever acres of the whole house land?
It, it's the whole house land and then also a couple of other places like over here down by Sloane's.
Behind us, over on Illinois DK's locks back there, behind there.
No, I don't think so.
'Cause that's in the Tiff district now.
Well, it's just, we're just approving the ordinance for annexation, but you're talking about.
So just the pink ones, but that would be Tiff district?
That was already, and all the blue is already in the Tiff. And the pink is what's being, would be added.
We can add personal homes into the Tiff district.
Yes.
You can add all, some of the, a lot of this is.
Okay, no, that's, I'm good.
Perfect, thank you. Alright, anybody else? Roll, alright. Up next, we got communications from the mayor. Uh first off, I do wanna, you know, send a great thank you to uh everybody in Assumption for craving a couple of days without power. Um everybody did great. Brian, thank you for going out there and actually sitting out with the Amory crew on Friday. So I really appreciate that and um all the city workers. We will be getting your limbs, just be patient. Uh Summer Crew is out there. Uh yesterday, uh this will be on Monday, uh Carter Lindy was out themselves. They're getting their limbs, they're getting as much as they can themselves and then we'll come through and get them with the uh endlovers. And uh, we're not here. Um also, I wanna let you all know that on August the fourth, WCIA Channel Three will be here in town filming our town. And uh we're gonna be closing off Main Street, it'll be about four. They're gonna film their newscast, uh four, five, and six in front of the Veterans Memorial. And what they're gonna be doing is, is they're gonna be setting up two tents, one for the anchors, one for their crew and everything. And um this is kind of in conjunction with Assumption Community Pride, so we're gonna have like a little mini uh farmer's market set up. Joyce, I think you have been uh reached out to on to uh doing some discussions on the historical means of Assumption. You're gonna be getting a phone call.
Okay.
And uh, so, we'll, we'll close down the street from about two until when they get done, it'll be a little bit after seven o'clock. Uh they were here Monday when I met with them, uh they got some aerial views. And uh they're also gonna be uh talking to local businessmen, uh going into local businesses, so they're gonna be really promoting the town. So that will be on August of uh fourth. Come up, bring your kids, bring your family, watch it, that's what they want, you get a chance on being on TV. So definitely encourage everybody to take part in it. Uh also wanted to say thank you to everybody, the fireworks were great last night. Um, you know, and, you know, like, we were a little worried we were gonna have to have them since we didn't have much rain, but no, they were, went off without a hitch, they were great. Uh CTI is also finishing up in town. They are, they are on schedule to uh bring fiber in at the end of the year. They'll probably be done with Assumption by the end of October, but then it'll be dragging the fiber lines from Taylorville to Assumption, it's gonna take another two months after October, so that makes it towards the end of the year. And I also wanna kind of say something too, um I have not heard anything back, but I got a phone call, uh random, it was right at the end of June. And uh I had reached out to some, uh some businesses and uh agencies about getting charging stations. Well, we had a guy called from Winfield, Illinois, called, and he was with Cary Farms. And uh he was applying for a grant to a fourteen other municipalities, we would be the fifteenth, on getting charging stations for here in Assumption. We have not heard anything back on it, but I wanted to all let you know. Uh he has reached out to a bunch of downstate mayors and I was the only one that showed any interest, so he was very thankful for that. If in fact we do get the charging stations, there will be three of them, we had to put three locations in. And it'll be in three block radius of the downtown area and it'll be a revenue sharing with the four, fifteen other communities. So it's not gonna be a profit sharing for the first, you know, because they wanna do the revenue sharing, 'cause those were, you know, the numbers are, so. We have not heard if we've gotten anything yet. Um there's just no money out, it was just time, we had to work till, uh it was about, what, ten thirty one night? Because uh we had to get all the information into uh, to this guy, uh so that he can submit to the federal government by midnight, so. Hopefully this is a start uh for it and uh this company will take care of everything.
So what happens in the event of a power outage, since we just had that? I've seen several.
Two other people, two other people told me that.
How does it work? Do I generate?
We would, uh, so anyway, it's, well.
Down or down?
I'll, I'll, I'll tell you, it is the plan, if, if we go any further, if we end up getting this, he's coming to our next meeting to do a presentation. So that's something you can ask, but I would probably have to say we probably won't have any power. You probably won't, because no different than, the gas station's not working, so you're not gonna get any gas for your car. Um but.
But if you charge your car, then you can use that to run.
That's true. So it was just something, you know, very naked, it's a revenue maker, you know, for the community, you know, down the road. It would be a ten-year contract if we were to go with something like this, so. But like I said, we have not heard anything else and I told uh Steven about it, so he's aware. And uh that's really all that I have, uh if you ask the attorney to bring up, we can discuss, so leave it over to you.
Okay, uh well, last meeting, I told you about the violation notice that we received from the uh EIA. Since the last meeting, I never responded to that, talked to Jack, got the details on that, sent a package into the EPA and we've got a meeting scheduled for tomorrow. So hopefully that'll blow over one way or another. Uh I'm also told that they, if you recall, there was a, a issue with the existing consent order and whether it needed to be modified, but I just heard from the Attorney General that said, that they don't think it does, so I'll find out more about that tomorrow, but hopefully all this EPA stuff is drifting away, you know, and just get the money. So uh then the other things on my list that haven't made it out, the agenda includes the Wellington property of Duncan, which I was going to do uh latter part of last week when the tornado hit. Unfortunately, just pulled the rug out from under me, so.
He loves to chat.
Yeah, he has got it bad, but I'm sorry, we gotta work. Close the town and in fact, some of my neighbors still live on that property. Um but anyway, so apologize for that, but I'll have a report on those next, next week. If you have any questions, that's what I have to say.
Thank you, Trevor, you got anything? Alright, up next, anything with the aldermen? City clerk, you got anything, Jamie? Alright, well, go ahead, we'll start moving on to uh new business. Uh for, uh first, we have the motion to approve the ordinance for fences for pools, this would be ordinance number uh seven nine eight. We have a motion to approve the ordinance number seven nine eight. Once? Alright.
So will you rework this and then break it back up?
I need to know what you want.
Yeah, we need to know what they want.
He's not gonna do anything until he knows more information, but I think we need to put something in for pools.
What, you know, what I, I have shared, and I don't know if it's gotten spread around to everybody, but I did have like several different versions, as I was saying, there's, you know, runs the GADA. And what I could do is collect those and distribute those like early next week to the aldermen. And then you guys can, you know, maybe weigh in during the month and let me know how, what you wanted added to it, how you wanna change it, is there one that you prefer over the others, et cetera. Again, this was just trying to take the lowest hanging fruit, this, you know, just do the simple one that the county has and get something on the board. But understanding that that doesn't cover, there's a lot of open issues with that ordinance, so. That would be one possibility is for me to just plug you guys with information.
I mean, I'm just gonna be upfront, I'm not gonna, I'm, I'm not gonna put a motion on the table regardless for pool things, for fencing around pools. But that's just my personal opinion, I haven't had anybody reach out to me that was for the fence. Um so at this point, I'm just a, just a known one.
But you also have a pool, correct?
Yeah, we just put it up this weekend.
Yeah.
But I have a fence too.
The whole, all the way around it?
Not yet.
Okay.
It has nothing to do with it, Angel, I, I had that pool three, four months ago, we just actually got it put up, so that's a non-issue. When I have a pool or when I don't have a pool.
It's a safety for our kids, just like getting that officer out here to the school.
I'm not gonna get into it, so is speeding, so is a lot of other things.
And that's why we have cups for the speed.
I understand that, but I.
That's why we're getting an officer out here to protect our kids, correct?
I understand.
But we don't wanna protect our kids from drowning? We wanna wait until something happens and then, oh, maybe we should do something now.
Me having a pool has nothing to do with what you're saying.
It has everything to do.
I'm telling you, uh my opinion on this ordinance, I'm not talking about my pool being in subject, which is what you brought up.
I'm talking about everybody's pool in town.
I understand, I'm saying who reached out to me, no one reached out to me on this except for they were against it. So I'm speaking for whoever spoke to me.
Well, now you have people reach out to you because they're against it, because you didn't say no one reached out to you initially.
You know, didn't you do a survey around town? I can't, didn't you tell me how many total pools that if you, if you went just by the ordinance?
About thirty-one.
There's about, and how many of them would need fences? All of them?
No, not at all.
Yeah. There was two, so basically, the ordinance covers two pools out of.
Two completed and a couple.
We are putting a fence, so.
Yeah, and you're giving them a year. And you're giving them a year to put the fence up, so what's the harm in waiting a month and fixing the ordinance?
But if there's, if there's no contingency on doing it, then, then it can't do it. You were just bringing it up and it's just sort of fatal.
There's already fence.
That's one thing, I was like six.
No, but it will be.
Yeah.
There's apparently not a motion on the table.
Yeah, there's, there's not, so we gotta move, we'll have to move on. Uh up next, we have a motion to approve the ordinance for approving annexation, that would be ordinance number seven nine nine. Motion for that, please. Anything you wanna add, come back?
If I, just uh some more with the explanation, of course, this is the, to annex the, the whole house property for purposes of the Tiff extension. Um all this is doing is annexing, we're not, the city's not purchasing it yet, so this will become a part of the city regardless of what happens in September. Uh not even, not as if it's being annexed, it's a part, but uh but this is just that. And there's only uh one thing that was, would still be needed for this ordinance and that is uh a map. He's got a map and a legal description was passed around, but that has all of the tracks. When we submit this to the county, the map will be only what's, we have the big ordinance track E. I believe that's great.
Yes.
Um because that's, part of the property is already in the city, so it's not being annexed. They're part of the property that, that you're gonna be purchasing. Um but, so all we need to annex in is the other part and that's what we need to tell the county, here's what's coming in for the city. So um what you're voting on tonight will be modified slightly by changing the, the map. The one that's attached or was handed out to you to one of the specific, just to let, you know, what's labeled as track E. Hope that makes sense. And the reason is just simply the logistics of getting that map for tonight's meeting.
Yeah.
But there would be no change in the description.
No.
You are correct, that's from what I've read.
Alright, we have a motion to approve it now, ordinance number seven nine nine.
I make the motion to approve the seven nine nine.
You have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Sing none, roll call please.
Reed?
Yes.
Walden?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Workman?
Yes.
Nelson?
No.
Alright, thank you, up next, we have a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter an agreement providing Tiff funds to Oldies nineteen hundred in. What this is, is that uh Renee is, as you can see, is doing some work to get a bakery put into the first floor. Um we, since we really kind of got us rid of the facade, um like agreements, uh what we are looking at is a, doing a three thousand dollar grant per. Uh this would be for uh, turn in receipts, of course, show the work and everything, so just need an agreement to approve that, please.
I make a motion to approve the Tiff fund for Oldies nineteen hundred in.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Sing none, roll call please.
Smith?
Yes.
Walden?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Workman?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Alrighty, up next, you call this the boring part, the audit presentation. Thank you for that. Uh for listening, who might not know me, my name's Adam Mathias, I own the CPA firm in Taylorville. And I have a crew here working on the annual audit um last month, uh got through everything just fine, I'm here tonight just to highlight uh some of the numbers for you uh for last fiscal year, go over our uh comments and suggestions as well. Uh before I start, just to let you know, uh one of the reports that we have to prepare for you, which is the Comptroller, Illinois Comptroller's Annual Financial Report, uh which basically takes our numbers from the audit and just populates it in a different format. Um I do not have that completed yet because the state of Illinois hasn't released the fiscal year twenty-three software yet. Uh they usually release it anytime between May all the way up till August or September, kind of varies. Uh so we're keeping an eye on that, that for you, um and I'll get that prepared and uh over for your signature as soon as it's done. Once that's complete, then you guys can work with, I believe Keith you work with on the uh AFR for the Tiff, it's a separate AFR. Okay? And I'll remind you of that next month or the month after, once I get this done. Um the other report that we prepared for you, uh that's not in front of you, is a GADA report. It's a grant portal that we have to uh put all of your grant information into it. Again, it's similar to the report in front of you, it's just a different format. Um I have a copy of that report and the master copy of the report uh that I'm leaving with the treasurer, if you wanna take a look at that. But I will get that electronically filed for you tomorrow. So we'll get that taken care of, we'll get the Illinois Comptroller report taken care of as soon as we can, um and then you'll be good to go for another year. Uh as far as my discussion here tonight, I'm just gonna go over the highlights, I know you got a lot on the agenda. Uh for the financial numbers, I'll start with that. Uh to go over that, I brought charts that I passed out to everyone, they're colored charts. Uh I like to use these charts to highlight the numbers, I think it's the better uh tool for boards to look at because I can show you a history of what's happened over the last several years. Whereas the audit report numbers is just one year's worth of figures, okay? Uh but these numbers come from the audit report itself, uh just looks a little different. And the first chart you have there is your general fund. Uh your general fund cash on hand ended the year with a little over one point one million. Uh that's up about sixty thousand dollars from the year before. Um what happened last year, uh there were several things that were happening. Um you'll notice all the way over to the right, that the net income for the general fund last year was about two hundred and eighty-eight thousand. Uh the reason that your cash did not increase by that two hundred and eighty-eight thousand was because we did transfer some monies around between funds. So when I talk about the other funds here in a little bit, you'll see, you know, the opposite thing happening. Uh you know, we might have transferred money to the water fund and so forth, like our one percent sales tax money, we're moving out and a few other things like that. Um so that's why there's a difference there, okay? But I do have it, of course, reconciled to Penny. Uh the revenues, if you look at that, you'll see that those are fairly comparable the last two years. This past year, eight hundred and forty-one thousand, that's down forty-three thousand from the year before. Uh the two biggest reasons for that small decrease, uh number one, there was an increase in state income taxes by thirty-four thousand, but then we had a decrease in grant revenues of seventy-three thousand, that was ARPA. Um we did have ARPA money this year, but they were, that money was put into different funds, okay? Which, in a little bit, I'll show you which funds those went into, okay, parks and one other, alright? Uh your expenses fairly level, you know, during the past couple of years, uh five eleven versus five hundred and fifty-three thousand, uh so no big swings there. The special revenue funds is the next chart. So this is all your tax levies, um for the most part. So this is all your tax levies for the most part, so we never get too concerned about the fluctuation in these funds because you have to spend that money for its intended purpose, you know, whatever the tax levy covers. You'll see there your ending cash, nine hundred and sixty-four thousand, that's up thirty-eight thousand from the year before. You have a profit that's fairly level from year to year, ranging from sixty-seven thousand to ninety-four thousand, okay? The revenues you can see there are fairly level from year to year. This year, there is a small bump of about twenty-eight thousand, and that's because of the ARPA money I just mentioned. We did deposit some ARPA money in one of these funds, okay? I believe the parks. Correct me if I'm wrong, Jane, that sounds right, right?
That's right.
Yes, okay, and some more went into one of the utility funds. Your expenses, very level, one hundred and sixty-nine thousand both this year and last fiscal year, okay? The water funds, which is your next chart, and then sewer after that, we'll spend just a little more time on this because you got a lot going on in these funds, of course, with the different projects that you have going on. Your cash in the water funds is, came in at the end of the year with one hundred and fifty-six thousand, that's down by a hundred and seventeen thousand from the year before. There's some reasons for that. You had a loss last year in the water fund of about twenty-five thousand, so that, you know, took some cash. And then there was also a lot of ins and outs with project costs, which I do not have in these numbers. I tried to keep this just the operations as far as the revenues and expenses. So we did have four hundred and seven, almost four hundred and eight thousand of grant revenue coming in for our projects that we were doing, and two hundred and twelve thousand of debt forgiveness for the projects that we were doing, and eight hundred and forty-three thousand of project costs, so a lot of ins and a lot of outs, but that took some of our cash to do it, okay? Plus the grant funds. Revenues, you can see there are fairly level from year to year, there's a little bit of a decrease this past year. That's because that middle column there that spiked just a little bit, do you see that on the revenue side? That's because that particular year had seven billing cycles, whereas the other two had six, there was a timing issue.
I remember that.
Yeah, there was some kind of glitch or something, and there ended up being seven billing cycles that one fiscal year. Your expenses last year were up sixty-three thousand, and that's almost solely to do with repairs and maintenance, were just a lot higher that year. This is beyond the project cost that I'm talking about because those aren't in this chart, the ones, the numbers I just mentioned earlier. This had more to do with inspections, flow testing pumps, things like that, we saw a lot of things going on that wasn't actually part of the big project, okay? The sewer funds, cash balance in those funds, a little over one point seven million, that's up over three hundred thousand from the year before. You can see there, your revenues are fairly level, your expenses are fairly level. The reason why there was a little bit of a bump in expenses in the sewer fund is because we have a new expense this past year, our debt repayment started, so we had interest, and that was about thirty-five thousand. Otherwise, it would have been very comparable from year to year. We had a net income of fifty-three thousand in this fund, but again, the, the cash balance went up by three hundred thousand because of some of the similar reasons I've been mentioning. We, you know, we are transferring monies between funds because of these projects that are going on. We also had debt forgiveness of four hundred and six thousand in this fund. We had loan proceeds that weren't forgiven of two hundred and seventy-three thousand in this fund, and then about four hundred and fifty-five thousand going out on the project costs. So just a lot of ins and a lot of outs, but at the end of the day, this is the cash that was left, okay? So as far as your water and sewer funds go, I mention this every year, you've got a lot going on in these funds, so I think it's good to highlight this. Your net income and your cash reserves overall, you know, between the two funds are fairly stable, but the water fund is down quite a bit. There's also a due to from between the water fund and the general fund because the water fund was short and needed, needed some funds to cover some of the costs last fiscal year. So with that in mind, you know, a couple things you'll wanna just keep an eye on, number one, you'll have to make a decision at some point whether or not you want the water fund to repay the general fund that fifty-nine thousand, or the board wants to, you know, forgive it or whatever, and then we could just call it a transfer, you know, we could reverse it in a future year. Number two, you did have some recent rate increases, so that'll help offset inflation, things like that that's coming on, coming up, but you're still gonna wanna continue to monitor that very closely because the water fund, you know, is tight, we start, we're starting to make debt repayments now and so forth, so you'll just wanna keep a close eye on that. And as you know, when you have something that needs fixed or repaired, not talking about the projects you're doing, but other things.
Rigs.
Yeah, it can, you know, the costs can add up very quickly, especially, you know, if it needs, if you need engineers, you know, you've got those costs, and then it's just expensive to do infrastructure, you know? So I just suggest that you keep an eye on that, you got, like I said, you got a lot going on, I know your engineers are helping you with that too, keeping an eye on it, cash flowing it for you, advising you, helping you with rates, things like that, and you'll wanna just continue to work closely, you know, with them on that to make sure that you've got that all balanced, you know, as you continue through these large projects. Another thing that we monitor for you, which you don't have in front of you, is we do take a look at your water that you pump and treat versus the water that you bill out to customers. This past fiscal year, that percentage was fifty-nine percent, so we bill out fifty-nine percent of the water that, that we actually treat and pump. Your three-year average is sixty, so it's right on, in line with your average. There is some loss that's expected because of backwashing and flushing, meter errors, leaks, there's lots of reasons, internal use, but we still like to keep an eye on that percentage just to make sure that there's no major swings because that might be indicative that there could be some kind of issue with the, like a main meter or something like that. But I encourage you guys also to monitor yourself internally as well, we do it once a year for you, but it wouldn't hurt to monitor that, you know, each month, make sure there's not any major fluctuations that you need to try to account for and so forth.
Sure, great. Is there, is there a state average, like what's considered normal billing percentage?
Not that I'm aware of, but I audit a lot of municipalities, and the percentages that I have in mind range from around where you're at to as high as ninety, so it just depends. Some villages, because what we do is we compare the, the, the total treated to billed and accounted for, not just billed. And so some of my villages just do a lot of work at trying to account for internal use, flushing, meter leaks and so forth, so that's another thing that you can do to help us fine tune this percentage in the future. Because right now, we have, you know, flushings that happen, I think those are, you know, accounted for to some degree, estimated to some degree, same thing with leaks and so forth. And then, some of my villages, you know, have their pipes, you know, the age of your pipes and infrastructure matter too, because there's less leaks with newer pipes, there's less errors with newer meters, right? So there's just so many factors that go into it. We're more concerned when we come with whether or not there's a big change from one year to another. You know, like, you're always at ninety and now you're sixty, what's going on here? You know? So that's what we look for, just the big, big picture type stuff. So that's the, the numbers. I do have a copy of that little spreadsheet that I keep, track of this and your average monthly billings and all that kinda stuff, and the master copy of the report, that will be in the treasurer's office, okay? If you wanted to take a look at that. I also gave a copy of it to Jack when I was here, I believe. Is Jack here?
No.
Okay, I think I did. If not, you can ask him and give him a copy of it. Okay, so that's the numbers. As far as the report goes, I just wanna highlight a couple quick things, and then I'll open it up to questions. In the bound report that you have in front of you, I just wanna point out where our audit opinion is. It's towards the front of the report, it's on our letterhead. At the top of it, it says independent auditors' report, okay? This is where we say that we did the audit and that we believe the numbers in this report to be accurate. When we were here, we did make some adjustments, you know, moved things between categories, things like that, but those were all posted, and so these numbers, you know, now match exactly what the city's accounting software shows as well. And so this report, all the work we do, all the numbers we crunch, all the invoices we look at, everything that we do is so that we can say this. So this is what the state's looking for, it's what granting agencies is looking for, GADA, the Comptroller, and so forth. So we call this a clean opinion, unmodified opinion, so I just wanted to let you know where that's at. We do have one other report that we issue, it starts on page five and ends on page six, and this is what we call the Government Auditing Standards Report. This is where we mention whether or not we came across any internal control related matters that we thought were significant enough or noteworthy enough to mention in this report, or any compliance findings that are material, such as over expenditures of budgets and that type of thing. We did not come across any material findings of that nature. The only thing that we mentioned in this report, which we do every year and we do for all of our small governments that we audit, is we do mention that the way you're structured as a small entity, it's just not possible for you to segregate all of the different accounting functions between multiple individuals. And again, it's the way Illinois governments are structured, you know, with the treasurer and the clerk and so forth. If payroll and bank reconciliations and vendor checks and all that kinda stuff isn't done by separate people, we just have to mention here that one person's doing a lot of that type of accounting work.
Even though, like, the aldermen go through everything, all of those warrant sheets, I mean, there've been times they caught things that, you know, Angel and I did catch.
Yeah, that is true, even with that, however, as you'll notice from the views of responsible officials, if that stuff is not happening, then there's a bigger issue, you know? So what we say is though, even though you're structured that way and one person does multiple accounting functions, that the board closely monitors and oversees the finances of the village. So there's no corrective action, you know, that you need to do, and there's nothing that you're doing wrong, per se, it's just a disclosure we have to make to make sure the readers or the financials know you're a smaller entity and not all of the different accounting functions are done by separate individuals. Some of the things that we do for our small entities when we do the audits is we do additional testing too, you know? We're looking at payments made to, you know, the treasurer, for example, and do they line up with the salary schedules if it's payroll? For, for really any board member, we're looking at checks written, is there support for it? Like, is it a reimbursement, you know, for something bought at Walmart, or for mileage, or for uniforms, or whatever the case may be? So we're closely monitoring all of those kinds of payments because of that. So we're doing additional testing. You guys are doing a great job with overseeing the finances, asking questions, looking closely at it. I see evidence of that, of course, because I do review all the minutes in the committee meetings, and so we're very happy to see that, of course, because if we don't have that happening, if you're not doing what you need to be doing, and we're not doing the extra additional testing, then it gets really hard for us to be able to issue a report even, you know? So this is as clean of a report as a small entity can receive, you know, very good report. Another thing that we do is we issue a letter on our letterhead that the master copy has a copy of, that just says whether or not we had any disagreements with management when we were here, which we didn't, whether or not we came across any complex issues that we had to get outside assistance with, which we didn't. It talks about the journal entries, you know, that were made, has copies of those journal entries where we just moved things around, you know, maybe moved the, you know, sales tax to income tax or whatever, just, just some, you know, basic coding, recoding of things. And so we have copies of all that in, in the master copy of the report, if you'd like to look at it. We didn't have any issues or any disagreements, otherwise you'd all have a copy of it in front of you, we'd be going over it in detail. The only suggestion we had while we were here was just one small check that we needed to pay to the library for some replacement tax money. We pay them a percentage of the replacement tax money that we get, and there was just one month or two months that we needed to still give them, and that's one month, and that's been taken care of.
Because they come back like really weird, you know?
Yeah.
It's not like a standard month.
No, it's not.
Sometimes it comes in two months.
Two months, exactly.
Yeah, yeah. So it went really well, the audit went well, your numbers looked good, just you got a lot of big projects happening, so just watch it closely and make sure...
He knows it too, since it's too many.
You got a lot, and you wanna balance that, right? So that you don't get yourself in a cash flow crunch down the road. Things look great now, but, you know, you definitely wanna monitor your rates, monitor the projects, make sure they're coming in on budget, make sure your EPA monies and grant monies are, you know, gonna come in as anticipated, and you should be good to go. Okay?
Thank you.
I'm done. Oh, and of course, I wanna mention to the board, you know, we are very thankful for everyone here when we're doing our audit, working so closely with us. I know I mention that every year, but, you know, I don't just say it, the crew here worked very closely with us, got us the stuff we needed. I do like twenty-something of these in, in about as many weeks, and so I bring a big team of people, we're looking at a lot of stuff all at once, and we gotta go from one to the next to the next, and we really appreciated everybody, you know, giving us what we needed when we asked it for it timely, so we've got a good crew up there.
And I have to say thank you to Angel because I know with moving the funds around, you know, anything comes in, we gotta roll through the general revenue and then turn it over to Lockface Water or even our water loan, and so no, I, I get it, I, I thank you guys and everything.
All right, we have no other questions. Do we have a motion to approve the audit for fiscal year twenty-three?
I'll make the one.
Any discussion? Same man? Roll call, please.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Walden?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Adam.
All right, thank you. Yep.
Up next, a motion to approve for a school officer's officer radio for two thousand nine hundred, for twenty-nine hundred dollars, to be paid for out of ARPA funds for the police station. Do you want to add anything on that, Mike? As you all know, the, we appropriated eighteen thousand for the police department for out of our, for this fiscal year.
I'll make the motion.
All right, we have a second.
I'll second.
The discussion? Same man, roll call, please.
Walden?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Workman?